Okay, it's July 28th, 5:33, promoting the Grand. These things are the rest I think. They're in there.
They do. I don't know if they're still in there. Um, we were minutes. I don't have all like three of them each.
One, one of them.
So I'm just approve April 28 to. Yeah. Everybody. I am sure that I. Hey, yeah, sure.
Okay, everybody's written this. I'll contain an option to approve the. Second.
He's up.
Yeah.
You want me?
Eighteen, three.
I'm pleased to meet you.
More consecrated.
Or just take out.
All right. Okay.
Yes, we have a motion. We have a second. With one notation. Further discussion. I'll flip it quick. It's undertaken a motion. June 23rd, on some. Further discussion. In favor. Okay, next time we agenda, let's reorganize. All, all of them. This gentleman is here. Project is. So it must be a sort of overview. And then make some sort of action. Where's? There you. Just come on. Not that. You have to come on. So this is. We're the same. Even faster than. Take your. So each part, so. Be approved in few conditions. Uh, family and survivors. As well. So because. If I was expired. Forced. What we found in past. If there's no, if none of our. Bylaws has changed. We scroll through the process. Basically, it's mentioned. It's exceeded. So who come back? Sense then. He's coming back the same. The only thing I think that has changed that may or may not mean is a storm. Changes. So there's any way we're after safe. See if. It may have done a hell of a time.
We're going to use the.
Well, they're going to be. See if they may. Yeah, so whatever the new bylaws. Each engineer. So. As far as I'm concerned. Nothing wants to change. My application to. Actually. We would have to break it through. Through. Period. All. Nothing wants to change. And his, his engineer.
No, I think I will comment this as that because the chair's. Modern regulations. Chair of the board. For this to the board of the original decision. That was. And chair. Will require a.
There are forty-five conditions on this approval. Um, with that said. It's likely that, you know, assuming that you have either received this or not. There probably are some minor things that can be reflected in a new set of. Uh, regular prints particular to the stormwater. It does call out very specific. Comments regarding certain lots. Um, and stormwater retention around those lots. So I think it's just to ensure that the new plans reflect that or whatever. The, so the amended plans. Would look like, but as the chair mentioned. You know, I don't, I don't think going through a peer review is necessary.
Yeah.
Uh, assuming your. Your engineer suggests and states that it meets the, the current. By, by, by adhering to the comments from 2017. That it would meet those particular regulations. I think at the very least too, as we would typically do during a public hearing. Sending it to town staff for their additional comments. Probably want to hear from the superintendent, the highway super. Um, just regarding the stormwater, um, but. You know.
Yeah, we'll go through the regular.
Yes, this through a regular process, but I don't think that it necessarily. Necessarily needs the peer review as it did when it was, you know. Granted the first time.
And you did mention you were trying to figure out a way how you could phase it.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see if I could like. Either three phases are going to be for. Um, but you know, at least three phases. That's possible.
So.
There's twelve building lots. Wait, no, there aren't. Well, that mark.
Seven, five.
Seven is five.
So. So phasing it. You probably have to show us how you're going to phase it. And, and how you're going to maintain. Again, this will be discussion when we have the hearing. One of the sticky, the sticky factors is going to be as if. You're starting, where you're starting here. So you start here and you want to call this phase one. You know, then how do we get a turnaround for fire? Perhaps.
Do it more.
Have to do a cul-de-sac. We'd have to see that so that we could get the, the fire department to approve it. Mm-hmm. Um, and so on. And at some point, process coming back out over here. At some point. Just my opinion. Maybe once you get to about half of the second phase or this piece. I'd say we'd want the rest of this road. Maybe not finish. But.
Rough grade, yeah.
A cut in with a rough. Base boat to get us, to get you out.
Is this cleared? No.
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 So think about that because I know the fire department, when we, when we send this out for review to. And, and you want us, us to approve. The whole project, but in, in phases. Then think about, have your engineer think about that because I know the fire chief's. Police chief are going to have. And, and DPW because they're going to want a place to turn around. So, so if you're, if you're not going to do the whole road at once.
Do you have a timeline for phases?
Um, not yet. I'd like to see how many phases I can get. How many, you know, how many lots I can develop at a time. Figure out a timeline. That's something I'll, you know, get together in March.
Yeah.
So I'm just throwing that out now so that when you come, you come with a plan, a plan that would. Would address that. I know in the past. Some of these developments have, have gone on for several years and it's all economy based, right? How fast? So the houses are selling. But. They've, they've in the past put the whole basin.
Clear everything.
Clear the world, put the basin. The base, with the stormwater management and the. The base. And as long as it's maintained by the developer. And it's, it's. Then you can do it as. As you know. Probably sometimes you're starting here and going that way. Somebody really wants this lot. You know.
It's usually hot goss.
So maybe we all.
Yeah.
Anyway, like. I, like our consultants said, everybody's in agreement that, you know, which. It's been approved once. I don't see any reason why it won't get approved again. So it means. Does. That's the only thing I'm aware of that's changed in our bylaws for subdivisions. And that if you're going to phase it, we're going to. That's going, we're going to see some sort of like a plan on how that's going to. How that's going to.
You know, I'll get together with my engineer this week and we'll start working on that. About the hearing, when, when, um, do I?
So you just would tell? So you did on town hall, called an application for subdivision.
Yeah.
How are we going to do that? Are we going to do just do it? We should be able to just do a hearing. And, and go over it rather than a. Pre-meetings. Because it's already been designed.
Um, I mean, sure, yeah, you can. I know that it might, it might be. Advantageous to. Just meet with staff just to reintroduce the project, but I don't see. Why you couldn't just open the public hearing. Accordingly, and then invite during the review process, those comments as they come in.
Yeah, so just go down, flip at the application. The. Processed. And then the, the town will look for a bottomless list. They'll tell you what you need to do. And what steps you need to move. Then. Get you on the schedule. Get it advertised. No, this is on. Get you on the schedule. All right. Thank you. You have a good luck.
Sir, you, you did have the, um, the decision. The, it was a special.
A big project.
The special.
The. For the.
One.
For the.
So, so this, just I'll try to get because this was. Something else.
Yeah. I can, I can forward. Yeah. Is your email that? Data construction. There's a. Dance construction. Okay, very good.
Home, right? It's way on the edge, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So can.
Be farther on.
You send everybody.
Oh, yeah.
Fresh memories.
Will that have all the same conditions?
Uh, it's like, I mean, the board. Depending on, you know, what the board contemplates. So probably, I mean, it talks about like what happens during construction, after construction. Whether or not you accept the road, some of those processes.
But don't forget that.
But it will have the previous forty-five.
Correct. Yeah, it's the original.
I'm working on a new fire chief.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Wedge. Yeah.
Yeah, but your point about the phasing, that's an important one with regards. It's, uh, you know, the, this. Vehicles.
It's going to be.
The song.
Wedge.
And punctuation needs.
Okay.
Some of those that are on a hill. I can't even imagine like your asphalt will cost these days to do, but once a ridge. The, the ones that are like up on that hill. I don't even. Or not.
That's important. Other than months of ridge. Not connected.
No, it's the same.
An extension.
So it's, it's going to loop back around to.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Reorganization. We've got four positions that need to be filled. Chair.
Five, chair. Chair, vice chair, treasurer, secretary, PVPC.
Okay, so let's start with the chair. Any?
I make a motion. I make a motion to keep. James Trumpy as chair. Also been planning. Do you want to be chair still?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay.
All right, so. We have a, you made the motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I have.
Okay, vice chair.
Does anyone want that position?
Who's been here the second longest?
Listen.
Me.
Are you interested in it?
I would be fine with it. Uh, but there definitely is some meetings that I haven't been able to attend all the time. So that is my only. Hesitancy like. However, I. I wouldn't mind at all.
You're in. We have, we have a motion.
Wow, thanks.
Second. Any further discussion?
You made the motion. Listen.
I didn't make a motion for myself.
Chris?
I thought, I thought Chris. Okay.
And who's second?
Me.
All in favor?
I agree. I.
Okay, secretary. No, actually, the next, the, the next three are pretty much. Ken, with me? Secretary. I said the next three positions. Kind of you anyway.
Yeah, you'll need to work with me because we need to figure out. Money. So the treasurer will have a. You know. A role. Same, same with secretary during the.
I'll, I'll try secretary.
All right.
Try.
So, so just explain, so. Sometimes you may have to take minutes, but Ken's usually here to do. Ken fills those, those other two positions kind of.
Right.
Actually, all three in some ways, but. But it's still like, it's still a position that needs to be filled by the board.
Right.
And. Act as the backup and.
Yeah, right.
Ken's absence. So. We have a motion. For secretary.
I'll make a motion to. Have, you know, be the secretary.
Second to motion.
The second sit. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Motion carries. Treasurer. Same, same kind of thing.
Can I have a description on the other position?
Pioneer Valley?
Yeah.
So. Pioneer Valley rep. Is the, the individual that's the liaison between Grandi Planning Board. And the, and the. So. Once that person is elected. They become the, the go-to for Pioneer. You get all the information, letters, what's going. Meetings to go to if you choose to do so. Unfortunately, uh, again. Our. Sorry. Our. Our rep is from Pioneer Valley, so he's like the first and we usually hear about it before we read. Anybody who can give a letter.
Yes, I, I think, yes, as the chair stated, it's. I will usually offer a lot of the information that. The PVPC, you know, usually because we, we represent all forty-three communities in the Handen and Hampshire County. And the reality is there are often times where. There are votes that need to be taken by the member municipalities of which Grandi is one of them. You would have a vote if you attended a meeting and would be able to vote on. Certain things related to the PVPC, so it's budget, you know, and other items. But that's, that's the role, but I will obviously. So be supporting whoever. You know, sits in that role and feed information as necessary.
So, um, since I've been on the board, anybody that's been involved in Pioneer Valley as, as our rep. Needed it a little bit. We went to.
Two.
What's that?
On Zoom, you can do it on the.
So. So. Okay, so treasurer. That'd be interesting. Be interested in treasurer?
Right.
Second. Want to motion?
Go ahead, about the motion.
Make a motion, Chris, so. Check in.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Only one left. It's me.
Okay. I make a motion to have Nate as our PVC. Maybe. Pioneer, Pioneer Valley Planning Association liaison.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
All right. All right, that takes. That portion out. So I'm going to jump ahead. Our next meeting is August eleventh. We have a couple of hearings coming.
We have two public hearings on August 11th. Kathy did share with you those applications. They include sixty-one Pleasant Street, which is a site plan approval. It's not a public hearing, it's a public. Meeting item because it does not require the same scrutiny as a public hearing. Um, and that's for a site plan approval for. Petition of Five Corners LLC seeking a site plan approval for a day spa. Under section six point three of the Grandi zoning bylaws at sixty-one Pleasant Street. So that is scheduled for five forty PM. Scheduled for five fifty and again, obviously the time, you know, it just means that these are times that. You need to have them open. Um, you can always continue if necessary. At five fifty, we have a special permit and site plan approval. For. The petition of Maryland. Yacconee from one eighty-five West Street. Seeking a special, sorry, West State Street. Seeking a special permit with site plan approval for a fast food establishment without drive through. At one eighty-five West Street. West State Street. So those are two public hearings. The site plan approval requires three affirmative votes, special permit requires four.
I will be able to attend August eleventh. August twenty-fifth, I will not be here, but August eleventh, I will be here.
So it's good for me to. Everybody's attendance with these things because. If you, if you're going to be on vacation or two of you are going to be on vacation. It's, it's good that the rest of us know that we have to be here.
Yeah.
And if they're not, if something comes up where you can't be here, but I, I'd rather cancel the meeting.
Right.
Then, then the town can notify whoever was supposed to be here.
Yep. Was August twenty-fifth a, um, a special? A public hearing?
It, it could be because we, we could. Continue a meeting from the first.
Okay. I can do it on the twenty-sixth. If it is a public.
Well, let's, the, the eleventh is the public hearing. Let's, let's see what happens after that. Well, at that point, if, if something comes up when we feel that we can continue it.
Yep.
Then, then we can discuss. Date that may not coincide with our normal dates.
Okay.
And then cancel our normal.
Okay.
All right. Our work plan, Ken's been working on. Updating some of our bylaws. And then, and then once we. Once we go through them. Agree to them. Have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Or hearings. And we, once that's complete. Then we could, then we can send the articles to the select board for approval for the next time. Now, running parallel to this. Our select board has, has put together a. Our Select Board has, has put together a review board. Which I told him, uh, several weeks ago, speaking for myself, that it's redundant, we're already working on it. They seem to have acknowledged that, but at the same time, they've gone out and put together a board to review our zoning bylaws. And the other day, I got a letter stating that, request them that I participate.
In the board?
On that particular board. I've, I've stayed silent about it since because I wanted to get the feedback from this board on how you felt about it. I don't feel as though I.
I don't think it makes sense personally.
Right, it seems to be a topic.
Yeah, if it's a year just on it, maybe change things and.
That's the way I feel about it. We're, we're working here to improve the, the town's bylaws on an ongoing basis. Because we understand it's a, it's a living document.
Right.
Just as time goes on. We see some of the issues before anybody else does. And to set up another board seems redundant to me. And quite frankly, there's a, there's a hard enough time getting people to show up for the boards they commit to. And then for me to sit on another board and talk with other people about, uh, just to me, I, I sit on enough. I attended enough, I wasn't asked, I was, I was, I was sent a letter to.
Long hold.
Yeah. Be a point.
Don't you have the potential for very different opinions on either, either board?
And that's. It's all over, or it could be over.
Yeah.
You know, Ken's part of it, it's part of a grant that was given to the town. Why the Select Board feel they need to, to use it? Which is, which is really outside their, their scope. Planning Board is charged for zoning. And to me, not being territorial about it, I just, I just feel it's a redundant effort. We work, we come here, we show up, we do a lot of work on not just what's presented to us by applicants, but what's also presented to us or what we find an error, or things that need to be changed going forward.
Was there some background to why they put this board together?
I mean.
They, quite frankly, I don't think that, they didn't even have the, the, the courtesy, professional courtesy to notify us and, and get our thoughts on what we thought.
Yep.
It's possible they don't even really understand what the planning board does, I mean, so many people don't, I mean, I've been asked.
All, all the more reason professional courtesy to reach out to the Planning Board.
Right. Yeah.
There are potential for issues, legality issues. Like not saying any of the government's lane, really, if it opens up the town for.
Well, what, whatever they do, they, the way the process has worked in the past is if something has, has come up and so, and it's, the, the Select Board feels it needs to be addressed, they send the Planning Board a letter asking us to look into.
Right.
Changing the zoning or, or, or look into it.
Yep.
And we have an obligation because Select Board requested it. We have that obligation, obligation to do it.
Right.
We'll look into it, and if it, if it, if it's, uh, it needs addressing, then we, we look at how it should be addressed. We hold the hearing, and then we, and then we, we go back to the Select Board with a recommendation.
So would that review board be coming to us anyway? With their reviews? And their outtakes?
Well. Ken might be able to answer this better than you, but they don't have any, the Select Board has no jurisdiction on zoning, that I'm aware of. So they can come up and dream up anything they want, it still has to go. They can come to us and say, look, we, we formed the board, we want regulations or, or, but what are we doing?
I just.
Slap in the face.
I just don't want people to waste their time.
That's my point.
On a board when, you know, you're reviewing all of these bylaws anyway for zoning, and it's part of the grant, and so I just don't want people thinking that they're gonna be going through all the bylaw. I mean, or are you, like, open to welcoming the help? Or opinion? No.
And the thing is, every community does it differently.
Okay.
I've worked with a committee, I've worked with the Planning Board. Um, so we're doing this in two other communities at the mo, the same, kind of the same timeframe.
Yep.
And I'm working with the Planning Boards. Um, it's, it's hard because they're also very busy Planning Boards.
Right.
Um, with regards to development applications that they somehow have to fit, you know, review of a public document. Um, but I think some of that conversation is also lending itself to having additional meetings or meetings during the day with Planning Board members and or others. Um. But again, it's, it's different all over.
Right.
And, you know, I think, as the Chair stated, the town has identified us, a committee that was, um, formed by the Select Board that in, includes different people in town government, um, that may have some insight to permitting and development in town. But, yeah, that's, you know, it's kind of navigating that. Um, you know, and as you know, uh, my intention is to, after the meeting on the board, uh, the eleven, the following meeting, whenever that's scheduled, is to share with you the zoning diagnostic, because I am near finished with it. It is a report, it's a review. Um, it's a, you know, a, a, a high-level review of your zoning, some missing items, considerations for future iterations and amendments. Um, obviously, as, you know, Jim had stated, over time, I've also circled a lot and also made comments about things that need to change. So that will be identified, not necessarily language yet, but more so, this needs to be changed. You know, figure out what that looks like.
Ken, will the changes go, like, she was asking, Melissa was asking, like, will they go here and then won't decide if the change they made? Or will they go to a town meeting and then?
They, they will have to go to town meeting if their official zoning changes. Um, the Planning Board will have to have its public hearing if the Planning Board decides that that is an appropriate change. Or someone brings it to the Planning Board and the Planning Board has its meeting and says, this is appropriate. Um, so I think what the Select Board is trying to do is just get different voices in process. Um. Yeah, and so that's my understanding.
So, I mean, thirty-five here, right?
Example of what's taken place in the past, and I probably brought this up before. We've got, we've. We've had things brought to town meeting and amended on the floor. And the town votes for it and it goes through, and then it comes back to us. It, it was a lot, the amendment was a lot. It comes back to us and says, well, by doing that, it also caused two other problems that we have to rectify.
Right.
Because of what was done.
Right.
They don't have the full, the full scope of what the ramifications of just, you know, changing something on the floor. I think if it, if the town doesn't like it, they vote it down and they send it back to committee to, to review, because there's, there's every, every move you make on that, that bylaw may have adverse changes about the story.
Right. So, I mean, my suggestion would be for them to sit tight, look at the changes that you are making to the bylaws and see if, after we, we meet on it and if there's any changes, then if they still think that there is additional changes that are needed, maybe then do a committee, but at this point, I don't think that it's probably necessary before Ken comes up with the changes that he's gonna be making.
And I don't worry is budget-wise, but the money that is appropriated has to be spent by.
For the big grant or the small diagnostic? So.
The small grant.
So, yeah, I mean, it's.
We're gonna burn through that just with the changes that we already recognized and to be made.
Yeah. We, yeah.
So the other grant should be at our discretion because it's, it is for zoning.
Yeah, it, it would accomplish some of the same things that you would want to do through the zoning diagnostic process. Again, you know, the grant, the zoning diagnostic is a report. It identifies areas of the bylaw which probably should be amended based on lots of various kind of conversations that we've had over the years. Um. Uh, it may identify already some language, whether or not the Planning Board wants to act on those. Again, you know, you have every right to based on that and based on what the report is. The da, the larger fifty thousand dollar grant, um, is supposed to go and has some scoped items that include um, either a survey or a community meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there's community engagement attached to that particular work. Um, in the other communities, they're identifying the, like, a community meeting where we're gonna talk about their zoning. Where we're gonna talk about some of the, um, you know, the things that probably should be in there or maybe need to get addressed in addition to allowing for them to, um, have some comment on areas where you might want to see some additional preservation or development. Um, you know, reviewing your current zoning back, things like that. So, you know, this exercise through the larger grant is supposed to, you know, involve people, whether or not it's the Planning Board, like overseeing that process, or another committee overseeing the process. Um, that's, that's the goal of that. Um, in addition to doing a, um, line-by-line review of the zoning bylaw.
But it should be our choice if we do choose a committee to review these bylaws because it is a grant that is giving, given to the planning. Or to use for zoning, right, for the town.
Yeah, that's kind of my take on it too.
Yeah.
Like, we would be in a position where we feel we need the additional help.
Right.
But it doesn't appear that that's the case.
Right.
Ken, is there's language in the function of the town saying that zoning issues or whatever shall be governed by the Planning Board?
As Jim stated, all, the zoning board is a responsibility. Any amendments to the zoning bylaw have to go through the, the Planning Board. So even if a citizen identified something they did not like in the bylaw and said, we need to change this. They get their citizen petition completed, you know, it, it goes through a process. They have to pay for a public hearing before the Planning Board go through a review by the Planning Board. Um, and the Planning Board will provide its recommendation, and then they go to town meeting with a recommendation from the Planning Board. So anyone could submit a zoning bylaw.
Okay.
Uh, but the Planning Board's responsibility is to go through a public hearing to talk about it. Um, and then it will go to town meeting.
So anything they decide still has to be channeled through there?
Yeah, so the zoning bylaw committee, you know, formally, I'm assuming, um, would have a recommendation to the Planning Board that there are items in here that we'd like to see changed or address what they actually want to do with the bylaw, bring that before the Board.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, it just, yeah, it sounds kind of wasteful.
Is the Select Board aware that Ken is reviewing the bylaws?
I don't know what they're, what they're aware of.
Do you?
I, I did tell them that at a, at a, at a public meeting.
You did say that.
Yeah, and I, and the town is aware, um, of the grant that was given at the beginning of the year. So that's the grant that was given at the beginning of the year to do this diagnostic phase. But because of our time, you know, of my time here with the Board, we can do a lot more with that money because it's more efficient, because we've identified a lot of issues ready.
Right.
Um, so where I'm doing this work in other communities, it's seeing the bylaw for the first time. I mean, I've seen this bylaw for five years and we've amended it multiple times. So, um, as, you know, Jim was stating, there is a place already where the Planning Board can, can act if they choose to based on some of the recommendations from the diagnostic. Um, and, you know, move through that process to take it to, to a town meeting. Um, even before the other work is kind of happening in parallel.
And nobody knows better than we know as far as what issues we've come up, come up to, you know.
Right.
Ken come across, for, for, for instance, um, where it states, and if, if it's not, if it, if it's if it's not in the bylaw, it's not allowed. In other words, food trucks or, or whatever, if it's not in the bylaw, it's not, well, that's absolutely ridiculous.
Okay, you can't, you can't, you can't have everything that's, we need to change the word.
Right.
We've talked about this.
Right.
Ken's working. You know, and, and the sheds is run good for deals. The other big ones.
So when you're afraid of, you're gonna go to this committee meeting, you gotta be able to come up with all these ideas, have nothing to do with these things, and you're wasting a lot of time.
Well, I'm not gonna spend any, I spend enough time.
For the town.
And five other committees for the town, so you want to?
It's fine.
It's just making more work than's unnecessary.
Right.
And to me, it's a sock and a face to the Board.
Yeah.
Can we vote to absorb this committee?
So is the committee being formed for sure, or what is?
It's formed, um, because I also am on the committee.
So now, if zoning is under the Planning Board, does the Select Board have jurisdiction to do, to form a committee that is focused on zoning?
I mean, presumably, they do, um, based on the fact that they have the ability to review something, but.
But at the end of the day.
At the end of the day, it still has to go before.
All I can do is, here, Planning Board, here's our recommendation.
It's difficult.
It's not.
Not at all.
Yeah. It's, it's more work.
So if it's already formed, is there anything that we can do about it? Can we appeal it or anything like that?
No, I don't need to do any of that, you know. I haven't said any more than I, I brought it up several weeks ago with her, when I was at the town for, before the Select Board on something else, and I brought her. And then since then, I haven't talked about it because I wanted to get some feedback.
Right.
Think the, the the way to address it would be to talk to the Select Board, and I don't want to do that at all.
No, I agree that we should talk to the Select Board about it because we don't want them to be doing work that Ken's already doing.
Well, we can all get on their agenda, or I can go down and speak to them, or, or however you guys want to do it.
It's up to you.
I didn't want to speak on behalf of the Board without getting, getting.
You have my permission, I don't know about anyone else, go.
Yeah, I think it's redundant, I think it's, it's not needed.
Okay.
I do appreciate other people's opinions on this stuff, but I don't think it's brought through the right channels correctly. I think we could work together with the Select Board if they have certain opinions, but a whole committee if that's reasonable.
And, and the thing is, any of these changes we're making, we have to have a formal agreement.
Right.
We may have to have a couple of forms to get in with, to make feedback before, before it goes to a, a, a recommendation to the, to the Select Board to make an article.
Right.
It's not running well, Stan, I think.
Okay. Do you have anything else? Do you have anything else for us, Ken?
Um, I actually do, so, um, my colleague, Aiden. Uh, I mean, Matt, who you will be, um, meeting at some point. Um, he helped me put together rules and regulations for the Board, so I have a draft document. Been working on that last year, I'd like the Board to take a look at that, I'll share that with you. Um, it should be adopted, um, it includes a fee schedule. Um, you know, we've had some issues with application fees, I think, in the past, and really trying to come up with a process to ensure that the Planning Board has funds, um, from the application. So that includes, like, after a period, um, a public notification goes out, you know, making sure that the town, the Planning Board is collecting those fees paying from that, that, um, bucket of money. in addition to the time that is typically charged to the applicant based on your professional consultant's time. So, you know, identifying those hours, invoicing and going through that process. So I'll be working with you, Chris, to do that. But through the, through the rules and regulations, I think it will also be helpful for the board to, you know, either get a refresher or, God forbid, the chair decides to leave one day, you'll know what to do. And so I think it's a matter of a reminder for how a board meeting is supposed to occur and some of the various steps there. And, you know, we'll go through that process. But that's a work product that, you know, we worked on last year. And Aiden probably will be assisting with regards to the zoning bylaw work as well, so.
And to your point, our fees are way, way low.
Yeah, so that, seeing that comment based on some of that and learning about what other towns are charging, taking a look at that and, you know, working with the board to establish fees that I think are more appropriate.
Yeah, we need to get them to get back to be more self-sufficient. We're charging what we need to charge.
And you have the data on all the kind of neighboring towns and.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the thing is, you know, even like your next door neighbor, Elton Towns, South Cattle, they have, they have planning staff. So, you know, there is a little efficiency built into that process, but they still charge, you know, a good amount, a lot more than Grammy does. But yeah, I have a couple of, like, data points from some of those surrounding towns.
What would a couple of the fees be, Ken? Like A and Rs and special permits?
A and R, special permit, site plan approvals. Sometimes, planning boards charge if they come in with an amended plan.
Gotcha.
Whether or not that's something that the board wants to do. But definitely special permits and probably a little more heft to it in addition to, yes, site plans, A and R, subdivision, kind of your typical planning board applications.
Do they look like general fees or are they, let's say a massive project wanting to come to Grandi, but consumed the planning board?
So for instance, the site plan approval, I think, starts at $2.50 and then 10 cents per square foot.
I got you.
And so, you know, that doesn't amount to a lot. Where you will, I mean, and the thing is, you likely will hire a third party if that's something that you want to do that will be at the cost of the applicant already. So that'd be on top of what the fee is. But I think, yeah, there, we were also, I think, discovering that the initial fee wasn't even covering the public hearing notices and the requirements for them. Because those prices are going up as well. So this is a time where other planning boards and communities are raising their fees because of the increase in prices and the application process.
I think that's fair.
So we'll bring, you know, bring that forward over time, but, you know, I figured that we can share with you a draft. And, you know, we can, as we're going through the zoning work, also take a look at your certain rules and rights.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Does anybody else have anything?
One more thing, Mr. Chair. So before the next meeting, I will also share with you, I would like the board, in their decisions, to have findings. So, for instance, a site plan or a special permit has special criteria that you're going to say, oh, this does not impact X, Y, Z. Or, you know, your bylaw states that this shall not impact the internal pedestrian, you know, kind of flow or whatever. So your statements, when it's time to render your decision, should say, this project will not do this based on the criteria, just to have a more formal decision where it includes that criteria. Given that oftentimes it's those findings, you know, if it becomes a messy decision or it becomes very contentious, where we need to ensure that we are backing up the decisions based on the criteria.
So in my previous planning board experience in another town, what was really nice is that when someone came with an application, there was also, there was a recommendation on behalf of the planning staff. So that was really helpful. So when we were reviewing, whether it was a site planner review, whether it was an A and R, whether it was, whatever it was that was coming in front of us, we had our planning staff's recommendation. Okay. So this way, we knew what the recommendation was, especially if there was extra wording that needed to go in to make if it was a delicate project or it became contentious. This way, we knew exactly, okay, so this was, you know, Ken's recommendation. So we can either, as a board, decide to take your recommendation or make amendments further. But I think that was really helpful on that planning board to know what our planning staff's recommendation was per project, especially if it's a larger project.
Sure. To Ken's point, that's usually when the findings are most relevant. On the larger projects. So basically what he's saying is when we make a decision, we should also include the findings that why it's being allowed, how it fits into.
Right. Right. So in those.
Those are special permits.
Yep. Yep.
It's an allowed use. It's working within the hours of normal operation.
Yep.
And we detail some of that out.
Right.
Not just, it's basically that plus the conditions that may be placed on that particular project.
So I think what I will do for the next meeting, you have two items. One is a site plan approval and then one is a special permit. There are findings you need to have for both. So I will share, I'll give the board a checklist, basically, that tells you what it is you need to find in order to provide that decision.
It was very helpful, especially when, you know, that board in particular, it was in a larger city, so we'd have sometimes seventeen items in an evening. But it was very helpful, especially if you wanted to, you know, have the findings and you had it right in front of you when you were making that motion. Obviously, sometimes we came to our own conclusion and didn't go with planning recommendation, but it was nice to have it right in front of you.
Agreed.
So, yeah, I mean, if anything, I will provide comments to those findings. But I typically do not provide recommendations. I mean, it could be something that we try just because, at the end of the day, it's the board. But as a professional, I can go through a plan and tell you what's missing, what you need to address, what you need to consider. And so those, I think at the very end of the day, that's probably a more helpful because I want to ensure that, you know, as a planning board, building your capacity to do this work.
Right.
Without a professional planner, that's on you. So, you know, I think at the very least, it will allow us, me, to help you, like, go through a process to identify, you know, the various things that would probably be identified in a review process.
Yeah. And I know that you're really helpful when we have questions. We always refer to you anyway. But when we have it right in front of us or when we have it emailed prior to, it was nice that, you know, we were able to review the whole packet and just make sure that we knew ahead of time.
Sure.
Anything else? Anybody have anything else?
I'm good.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting July 28th at 6:32.
Second?
Oh, second motion, annual planning board meeting.
And for discussion? All in favor?
I agree.
She carries.